I've received the lifesaving medal from that department as well as a Secret Service Medal of Appreciation and numerous letters of commendation. I've been elected to the Community Services District on three different occasions in 1990, 1994, and 1998 garnering the top vote in those three elections. I have the longest experience in local government as an elected official among the candidates here tonight. I've also been involved in the community as a board member to the Sacramento Regional Fire Communications Center, a former board member to the Elk Grove Senior Center, a member of the Community Action Panel, and I've assisted with the development of community programs such as the Neighborhood Accountability Board, the Every 15 Minute Program, and the Late Night Basketball Program. I also have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in organizational business management that I think will prove successful to the future of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Jim Cooper, you're next.
Hi, my name is Jim Cooper. I'm a tenured. Excuse me. Hello? Is it working? Hello? There we go.
That's cooperation.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Jim Cooper. I'm a 15-year veteran with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. I'm currently lieutenant and in charge of the Community Oriented Policing Strategies Division. Right now, I'm overseeing the decentralization of the Sheriff's Department. Excuse me for being hoarse as I came from a basketball game. We won, actually, my daughter's team. For the past several years, I've spent a number of hours or more than that as the second-in-command of the Administrative Division where I oversaw a budget of over $200 million in this supervision of 2,000 department employees. I've been very active in the community. I'm on the Board of Directors for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Children's Receiving Home, and I'm the Vice President of Elk Grove Girl Softball. The reason I'm running for the City Council is that local control is very important. By voting for incorporation, we have local control. We have a say-so on what goes on in the Elk Grove community.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Dennis Campbell.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Campbell. We can unite Elk Grove and Laguna into one of California's greatest cities. The historic town of Elk Grove was the cornerstone for the Laguna's success, and Elk Grove is noted for its quality of life and Elk Grove's reputation for family-oriented community with excellent schools and parks. New residents were attracted to Laguna. But now, transportation and infrastructure issues must be resolved to maintain our quality of life. For the past two years, I've been working to bring passenger rail service to Elk Grove. Both Amtrak and light rail service are possible if we unite as a community and make our voices heard. As president of the Elk Grove Old Town Merchants Association, I have shepherded the conceptual master plan for the Elk Grove Boulevard Improvement Project. The centerpiece of this plan is a multimodal transportation facility for Elk Grove. I want to be elected to the City Council because I am passionate about continuing this work. Your vote will allow me to carry on with this project. Vote for Dennis Campbell on March 7th. I pledge to be your City Council person.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Elliot Mulberg.
Well, hi. My name is Elliot Mulberg. I'm running for City Council because of my deep concern and commitment for the Elk Grove community. I want to use my local government experience to help make the new city work. That experience includes five years on the CSD Board, the Elk Grove Community Services District. I was elected in 1994, 1998, and served as president in 1996. I also represent those special districts like the CSD on LAFCO, which is the agency that reviewed and approved the incorporation proposal. I've served on our local planning advisory council, FLACPAC. My vision for Elk Grove is improve services. We need better police. I'd like to see the response time be comparable to our fire department. We need better bus service. I think one bus an hour is not enough. We need longer library hours. It seems that our library should be open more often than it is closed. My commitment to the Elk Grove community is over the past 10 years when we first moved here. I started, co-founded the Laguna Creek Community Association. Currently, I'm president of the Elk Grove Historical Society, director of the Elk Grove Western Festival, member of the Chamber of Commerce, and also active in the Laguna Woods Neighborhood Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mulberg. David Peterson.
Thank you. My name is David Peterson. I'm 43-years-old, father of seven children, married to my wife, Hiding, for 21 years. I've lived in the city of Elk Grove for 15 years. I'm employed at the News Group West directing the circulation of product of over $75 million in annual sales. I currently serve as the co-chairman of the Elk Grove Unified School District Finance Board, the committee. I'm involved in many local events and beautification projects. I'm running for City Council because I want to ensure that we have control of our own destiny. I can bring a strong sense of financial responsibility, manage growth, business development, proper tax management, public safety, and a safe atmosphere for learning in our schools. I bring a good understanding and service of love for my community and the desire to make this the greatest place for our children to grow up and be proud of. I'm a father concerned about his community. We need to take ownership of Elk Grove, and I can do that. I'm a man of honor and have no agenda. I have a proven record of leadership in the organizations and boards which I currently serve on. I have not, will not, accept any contributions from special interest groups. I'm not a man that can be easily persuaded and will lead with honor and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Lou Zimmerman.
Good evening. My name is Lou Zimmerman. On March 7th, vote as if Elk Grove's future depends on it, because it does. Your vote, your decision on Measure J dictates whether we have a successful future or not. Whether you select five people or not, that first vote is what counts. Behind every good city are good people: workers, executives, moms, dads, kids. Don't forget that on March 7th. Since 1988, I've been in this community, active, trying to make this a better place to live. I've served on community panels and commissions. I've worked with law enforcement agencies, public and private sector agencies, and the one thing I can tell you is that at the local level, we have the best opportunity to make this the kind of place where we can grow our children with the notion that they'll come back and want to grow their children here. I'm Lou Zimmerman. I'm here to listen to you. Please call. I want to know what's important to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. And Rick West.
Good evening. My name is Rick West. I've been a resident of Elk Grove for 16 years, living on both sides of the freeway. Been on, lived on the Elk Grove side for 10 years, have been on Laguna side for six years. With my vast experience on the Elk Grove Laguna Planning Council, I mean, I'm sorry, the Elk Grove Planning Council and the Laguna Creek Planning Council, serving seven years. I've served currently on the Neighborhood Accountability Board. I was past president of the Elk Grove Youth Bambino Baseball. I have danced in the Strauss Festival for five years and also sponsored the Strauss Festival. And I currently sit on the Home Field Advantage Board and chair the Home Field Advantage Celebrity Dinner. I encourage everybody to look at all the candidates and see what they've actually done in their community before they vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Gregory Moll.
My name is Gregory Moll. The Sacramento media market contains 3.2 million people. I mention this number because that's how many people saw the spotlight of shame which was beamed into our community last week because of the actions of the Elk Grove Community Services District. Sacramento-area TV stations and newspapers exposed the story of the widow who has assessed $477 by this district because her husband died in a car accident in Elk Grove. After public outcry, the board members apologized for this misguided policy and will be repealing it. However, I bring up this issue because we need to elect the City Council members in Elk Grove who will not be making those kinds of mistakes, which means we need at least one person on the City Council who has experience in discerning good policy from bad policy. I have over 10 years of such experience as a conservative Republican working in the state legislature, and I will be a voice for tax-paying citizens, not tax-spending bureaucrats trying to steal the last dime from widows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moll. Bill Hubbard, Bill Hibbard, excuse me.
My name is Bill Hibbard. I'm running for City Council because of the Elk Grove values, trusting, community spirit, commitment to excellence, and everybody's, to me, is a neighbor-in-law. Anybody needs something, they can come talk to me. I've been in one form or another of government employment since 1968, when I first went in the Army, went to Vietnam, and then went to Germany after that. I've been with the federal government now almost 25 years. I've worked for the city of Sacramento, for the county of Sacramento. I've been involved in youth sports from T-ball to Little League to baseball to youth football with Elk Grove and Laguna both. That's why I'm running for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbard. Next, Melinda Bredo.
Hi, my name's Melinda Bredo. I'm a wife and mother of Anthony, who is four-years-old. I am also a successful businesswoman. My restaurant, Mel Dog's Cafe, is located on the outskirts of town and has been there almost six years. I'm proud of this fact considering that most new restaurants go out of business in nine to 12 months. I have the proven business experience needed to ensure the fiscal, financial stability for this community. I am responsible for sticking to a budget, managing the money, accounts payable and receivable, and ultimately, my profit. The bottom line financially is the bottom line financially, whether it is a business or a city. Fiscal responsibility for Elk Grove will be my ultimate goal, and I am the woman for the job of City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Bredo. Norm DeYoung.
Vote yes on Measure J. Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Norm DeYoung, and I'm number 249 on your ballot. I'm mature at 55-years-old, and that, as that age suggests, I have the wisdom, the background, and the experience to bring to the City Council. I am a U.S. Army veteran and have served as the Vice Commander of the American Legion Post 604 located over on Gerber Road. My issues are the same as those of the Incorporations Committee: local control, public safety, and no new taxes. There is only one issue, and that is incorporation. A vote for incorporation is a vote to keep sales tax dollars in Elk Grove and to provide increased law enforcement without raising taxes. My name is Norm DeYoung. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Raoul Copino.
Good evening. Raoul Copino, at your service. My background is engineering and psychiatric technology. Please check my brochure for the list of my community involvement. Presently, I am organizing the Census 2000 Walk, Rally, and Parade to be held on March 18, 2000 at the State Capitol. This is supposed to be my first biggest project for this year. The population of Elk Grove right now is around 56,000. If the Census counted 40,000 only, the money you can get from the federal government will be based from that count for the next 10 years. That's a big loss of revenue for the new city. As your City Council member, I will take a stronger stand against development projects that will harm the fabric, the power of our community or hurt nearby communities. I advocate a moratorium on new residential and commercial development. Growth plans already in place will provide healthy tax base according to incorporation committee. A lot of cities are imposing a moratorium already on new development, examples of the city of San Jose and the city of Hollister. Hollister imposed it because I had to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Copino. Lorna Powell is next.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lorna Powell, and I thank you for coming out tonight. I am a retired peace officer, and I have worked as a probation assistant for the Sacramento County Juvenile Hall and a youth counselor, as a youth counselor with the California Department of Youth Authority. Currently, as an expert examiner for the Department of Corrections and the Department of Motor Vehicles, I am responsible for determining the ability of individuals best qualified for promotions. I have lived in Elk Grove for six years, and I have, I am now serving my third term on the New Dimensions Laguna Homeowners Association, where ensuring homeowners' concerns and addressing the needs of our community is my priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Sophia Sherman.
Thank you very much. My name is Sophia Sherman. I am a 30-year resident of Elk Grove. I know what this community needs, and how do I know? Because I have the experience and the leadership skills. Under my leadership skills, I am past president of the Chamber of Commerce, I am president of the Sacramento Employment Training Agency in Sacramento County, and I am a board of directors of the Elk Grove Community Services District and the immediate past president. I am involved in my community just by the awards that I have been, I have received. A couple of them was Elk Grove Citizen of the Year, Second Association for the Retarded for my community involvement, scholarship for women in politics that I started with the Elk Grove Unified School District. So having said that, I do have the leadership skills to lead this city into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Gary Winnick.
Good evening. My name is Gary Winnick. I've served as a deputy district attorney and as a business manager. Currently, I serve as the Deputy Director of the State Office of Criminal Justice Planning. That agency has a $250 million budget that goes across the state, including right here in Elk Grove, to support law enforcement and victims groups. I have an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University and a law degree from McGeorge School of Law here in Sacramento. I want to quickly highlight a few issues that are important to me. First and foremost is that we incorporate Elk Grove as a city. It's about time we kept our tax dollars local to spend on services here and took control of our planning and development. Three of my priorities, real quickly, on the City Council will be, first, public safety; second, that we provide for more balanced development in the city of Elk Grove. We have enough starter homes. We need to balance it out with retail and businesses and preserve some of our open spaces. And lastly, is an issue that's particularly important since we're here on Elk Grove Boulevard, and that's traffic control. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winnick. Now, we're going to begin at this end of the table again with questions that were posed by the Citizens Committee. And the first question will go to Dan Briggs. Most people are tired of the daily commute, 30 minutes or more each way. What would you do to attract good jobs with salaries that would allow people to work and raise a family in this community?
Well, first and... Thank you. First and foremost, I believe we need a balanced jobs and businesses here in town. We need to be able to create a wide variety of jobs for the different segments of the community, I believe. With the current ability to attract businesses with the Chamber of Commerce once we become a city and create a partnership that will allow us the opportunity to market and work in tandem with the, with the Chamber of Commerce. Also, the ability to work with developers and allowing them the opportunity to come in here and work with the council to see what the highest and best use of the land is and provide good, quality development will help.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. The next question will be addressed to Kenneth Brody. Once you've selected the city manager, what would you see as the three biggest challenges facing the City Council in its first year?
The first biggest challenge is attempting to negotiate a contract for law enforcement. Excuse me. We're gonna, we will be approached for this contract by more than one police agency. So the council will definitely need to get together, work through the night, work through the months, and attempt to negotiate a very strong contract for law enforcement. The next thing is to come up with a general plan of development and how we see our community growing in the next 10, 20, 30 years, and to set our goals for that in a reasonable and structured manner, not the haphazard way that the county has been planning our growth all these years. And the third priority I would have is also to attempt to start the boundary process to elect further councils according to boundaries rather than at large.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Mr. Surries, the Incorporation Committee has identified no new taxes, local control, and more police protection as three very important issues. What do you see as the next three most important issues that will face the City Council?
It's a tough question. Thanks. It, basically, following that is a strong economic development plan that needs to get into place immediately with an economic development department, one that's going to go out and elicit strong, high-paying job-type customers, similar to what we're seeing happening up in Roseville. Second thing I'd like to see, excuse me, is the development of a community plan that is going to be reflective of what we currently have. We're dealing with a 1974 community plan now that's horribly out of date and which has been in need of update, updated in quite a long time. And the third thing I'd like to see would be the establishment of a neighborhood coordinator position, which is going to be able to pull in the concerns and the needs of the neighborhoods, coinciding it with what the city is doing with development issues, law enforcement issues, and general growth patterns. Those would be the things I would do.
Thank you, Mr. Surries. Mr. Prater, agricultural land is one of Elk Grove's unique characteristics and assets. How would you ensure that agricultural lands are protected from urban development in the long term, for the long term?
The local control issue, to me, is getting our long-range master plan in place as soon as possible. And with the input from the community, how we would preserve our agricultural lands, I would, I would expect to hear from our, our community on those issues. I would like to see our sphere of influence plan expanded to include the total urban services boundaries. It'll give us a lot more real estate for future growth down the road. I believe if we get that going on at the earliest possible, it'll be both cheaper and easier to wrestle away from the county and allow those areas our agricultural areas that we, that we would have the local control to preserve them as such.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leary, there's a question here about traffic congestion and gridlock. It's already seen as a problem along Elk Grove Boulevard before the expected development has occurred. What would you recommend to improve conditions now and in the future to take care of this traffic problem?
Well, first of all, we have a problem not with just traffic, but with signal lights. I've mentioned before that we could synchronize signal lights to move the traffic flow throughout the whole community, including Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard. Those are, if we just take the resources we have available to us already and better utilize them, I think that we can, in fact, have less traffic within our, our community and, and the traffic flow increase and improve. We need to work with Union Pacific Railroad at this time also. That seems to be a concern of a lot of people. So that's also an issue that needs to be addressed, and I think that Union Pacific currently is looking at putting another track to assist in the problems with our traffic flow within the community.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. And Mr. Leary. Mr. Cooper, you're next. What do you think the mission of Elk Grove should be?
Mission?
Mission.
As far as the mission goes, I think the mission of Elk Grove should be to make Elk Grove the best place to live and raise a family, and that's one of the most important things. Growth's a big issue, and we're going to have growth out here. The reason people want to move out here is because of the quality of life. That's the most important thing right now, and that's why the Elk Grove area is one of the largest-growing communities in the Sacramento Valley area, because people want to move out here, and we can't just be closed-minded and say, no, we aren't going to have growth. Growth is going to happen, and by incorporating, we control growth, and that's the mission right now. This council has to be very active in that, and you pick five strong individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Campbell, what do you think the core values and principles are that should guide the City Council in fulfilling the mission of Elk Grove?
Well, first of all, I think the City, the City Council has to remember who they report to. They report to the citizens of Elk Grove, and the decisions they make should involve what is most important and issues for the, for the citizens. As far as security, safety, we need to listen and be open and make sure that everything we do is for the betterment of Elk Grove as far as local control and land use and safety and security issues, transportation, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Mulberg, homeowners and businesses in the vicinity of Hampton Village have been concerned by the recent threat to suburban propane. What can the City Council do to ensure their safety and property value?
Well, one of the things I think we should look at is what, first of all, we have to determine what kind of scenarios occur that might endanger the people that live in Hampton Village. We need to look at the report, and I know the chief meeker is going to be having a forum tomorrow to discuss the results of the studies that was looked at to see what exactly the impact would be. We need to look at, ask questions about what assumptions that went into that report to see exactly if they make sense. We need to look at whether the scenarios are probable, and if they are, then what we need to do is find some way to, some mitigation measures that would protect the homes of people that live in Hampton Village. And I think once we do that, then we can also look at, cross the freeway to make sure that we can build them all and it'll be safe for people to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. David Peterson, what would you do to preserve the charm and qualities of locally-owned businesses?
Well, first of all, I'm quite surprised that many of the local businesses are supporting something as, as large as a mall that would actually take away from their business. So first of all, I would, I would do what I could to stop Lent Ranch Mall, because I think it'll actually kill their business or take it away, as, as Walmart and many other large stores have come in and taken some of our local people, local businesses away. So I would ensure on my part, if elected to City Council, that Lent Ranch Mall would not be built.
Thank you. Strangely enough, the next question that I have here has to do with the Lent Ranch Mall. So, Mr. Zimmerman, it comes to you. The Lent Ranch Mall development raises many issues and concerns. Which issues do you think have the greatest impact on the city from a City Council perspective?
Actually, there's two or three of them. One is how do we bring a reasonable developmental plan to that area of town and within the proposed city of Elk Grove while assuring the property values and the security of the people in Hampton Village? And I think some of my colleagues here tonight have talked about some of those things tonight. We need to review and assess what the actual danger or risk is with the propane tanks there and mitigate those measures. Bring Lent Ranch Mall online with some modifications to preserve open space to the south and to encourage open space preservation along those lines, not only at Lent Ranch but also to the west, all the way to Franklin, and start developing plans to, to bring that online in a reasonable fashion, working with developers, save open space, Ecos, and the other stakeholders in the community, because they do bring jobs, they do bring other important revenue items to the city that we, we cannot neglect reviewing.
Thank you. We're going to begin now at the top of the list of questions again, because I had only 10 from the Citizens Committee, and ask you, Rick West, to address the first one that I asked, which was how you would attract good jobs with salaries that would allow people to work and raise a family in this new city.
Okay, I think attracting jobs is, is a regional issue. I'd work with the Elk Grove Chamber, I'd work with the SAC Metro Chamber to bring in business that creates high-paying jobs in our community. I'm a firm believer that business brings business. Better business brings better housing. Better housing brings more taxes to our community. Jobs are revenue. Revenue is money.
Thank you. Gregory Moll, what would be the three biggest challenges facing the City Council in its first year, other than appointing a new city manager?
Well, the city manager, of course, is a very key decision. I understand, in my capacity as a chief of staff in the state legislature for Senator Ray Haynes, that oftentimes, it's the staff who can provide some success because they provide the information that's needed, so that, of course, is a key decision. But after that, I believe some planning decisions need to be made by the Elk Grove City Council. If you look in recent years, we've had a proliferation of low-income housing forced onto Elk Grove, and those decisions have been made by the county supervisors, and we need, we need to have those decisions made with substantial input from homeowners to their locally-represented City Council members. And also, I'd like to talk about the fact that we have to have more public safety, of course. Public safety doesn't just protect the citizens who live there, but it also stimulates economic growth because businesses will want to locate where, where people feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moll. Bill Hibbard, the Incorporation Committee has identified three major issues: no new taxes, local control, and more police protection. What other three important issues do you believe are, are facing Elk Grove as a new city?
Well, along with, with that, you're going to have to hire a city attorney because you want everything legally done. Not everybody on, on the City Council will be an attorney, and you're going to want some guarantee that you aren't going to, going to hire a city manager that's going to come in here and work for six months and then run off with $250,000. At least, I don't want to see that happen. You're also going to have to develop a city charter. I believe in, in looking at annexing communities, especially further west. And then you're going to have to look at the water service. The way Elk Grove is being projected on growth, well water is not going to suffice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hibbard. Melinda Bredo. Mr. Hibbert. Melinda Bredo, we are down to the question about agricultural land again. It's one of Elk Grove's unique characteristics. How would you ensure that aglands are protected from urban development over the long term?
As a Farm Bureau member, I have the utmost respect for the agricultural community. That's one of the reasons we all live in Elk Grove, is the hometown feel in the agricultural land. I think if we limit the development on the existing agricultural land, that will maintain that area.
Thank you, Ms. Bredo. Norm DeYoung, the question we have for you is about traffic congestion. It's already a problem along Elk Grove Boulevard, and there are more developments expected that will contribute to it. What would you recommend to improve traffic conditions now and in the future?
Well, traffic conditions can be mitigated by some of the things that Sergeant Murray talked about, synchronizing lights and the patrols. Working with Union Pacific Railroad in Old Town would be a major undertaking. They actually have an 800 number that we can call. I don't know if anybody's ever called it, but that doesn't get you any results neither. So I think, once we have more police, more law enforcement in Elk Grove, and there are more people, more cars on the street, we can be able to move the traffic along much better, hopefully get out of any gridlock situations that we're on. Synchronizing the stoplights would go a long ways towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Copino, what do you think the mission of the new city of Elk Grove should be?
Well, the mission, I should say, should be to preserve the rural atmosphere of Elk Grove, to maintain the quality of life of the community, of the residents, that we're enjoying right now. And also, we need to be sensitive to the cultural needs of the diverse residents of community. And also, I would like to see Elk Grove to be the friendliest city in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copino. Larna Powell, what core values and principles should guide the city council in fulfilling this mission?
I believe that our core values should be true, honest, representation. As a city council, we will be responsible for representing the community, addressing your concerns. And the only way that we can ensure that we are representing the community, representing you as a community, is to ensure that you have the facts regarding issues that will be decided upon, and so that we can have a true representation of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Sophia Sherman, homeowners and businesses in the vicinity of Hampton Village have been concerned about the recent threat to suburban propane. What can the city council do to ensure the safety and property value of those homes?
Thank you. The safety issue of the citizens of Elk Grove, and not just Hampton, has always been of great concern to our fire department, to the CSD, and to anybody else that works in the area. Safety is always a prime, excuse me, is a great concern, and how do you deal with it? Well, number one, regarding suburban tanks, they have been here since 1971. At that time, they were known as propane gas, I think was the name of it, but they have changed to suburban now. So they were there, their name was on the tanks. So we knew they were there, the community knew they were there, they saw it being built. Now that they're built, and this issue came up regarding the terrorism, we then have been working with this suburban tank people. They are doing everything possible to keep it as safe as possible. But again, what else can you do but just work harder at making sure that they are good neighbors, and that's exactly what they have been so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Winner, the Lent Ranch Mall development raised many issues and concerns. Which issues do you think have the greatest impact on the city from the city council's perspective?
The issues that I think have the greatest impact on the city council are, first and foremost, public safety. Currently, we need to improve our response time. We need to make sure that we are providing adequate services, including school safety. Second, we need to make sure that we're preserving local businesses. And you know, one of the good things about incorporation is we have a great chance to start over. I know a lot of people, at some point or another, have been frustrated in dealing with governmental agencies. We have the chance to make Elk Grove business-friendly by starting fresh, by using things such as one-stop-business permitting that can make the city a friendly place to do business and provide good customer service to all of the citizens and businesses that are located here.
Thank you. Now, we're going to begin taking the questions that have been sent up to me from the people in attendance here. And that, we go back now for that to Dan Briggs. And this has to do with the Casumnas River Basin. The Casumnas River Basin is a gem of the South County. It is the last of its kind, a natural process watershed, recognized nationally for ecological significance. How would you protect the long-term integrity of the Casumnas River Basin?
Well, it's my understanding that that particular area is wetlands, and that we would preserve it as that is open space, and that there would be no development towards there. If there's opportunity to have public land within the city, if it was ever annexed into the city, to review that for public use without endangering any portion of that particular area.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Kenneth Brody, give you a question on transportation. How, excuse me, how will you ensure that more regional transit service is provided for Elk Grove-Laguna area?
Well, the only way to assure that more regional transit is provided is to work in conjunction with all the regional governments in maintaining a, or in coordinating a wide regional plan. I know that the RT Board has explored bringing light rail down south. I know that different cities have representatives on all the regional boards. We need to comply with federal and state health quality, air quality standards, as well as water quality standards. So we'd have to work as a region to bring more mass transit down. We can't just be an island unto ourselves. That isn't to say that local control is what's needed, but we still need to work with other municipalities in maintaining a regional outlook.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Soares, this is on taxes. The question is, we know that the voters must vote to raise taxes on property. Can you ensure that the, can you ensure the citizens of Elk Grove that sales tax for goods and services will not be raised?
That's a fairly easy issue to assure the voters on, based on two independent analyses conducted, both by the county and by independent auditors. Both of those were $100,000 of each other on their outcome. They showed we have a very high level of revenue coming in, more than enough to satisfy the service levels that the citizens will want. We're looking at about a $22 million budget. That budget will also provide about a $10 million surplus, nine and a half to 10 million year one. It'll drop down to about $2 million thereafter for a number of years. That is more than adequate to take on any special projects that citizens may wish to have, and I'm confident there will be no new taxes as a result of incorporation.
Thank you, Mr. Soares. Brian Prater, this is a question about establishing a citizen review board. Would you support a citizen review board for the police department? Why or why not?
I would definitely, I would definitely support a citizen review board. How else would we get input from our citizens on their perception of the quality of the police services we're receiving?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Leary, I don't know if I should ask you this one. The question is, who do you believe should provide police services for Elk Grove?
Oh, I'd love to answer that question.
And, oh, and the second part of it is, have you received contributions from the Sacramento Sheriff's Department?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
First and foremost, I think any candidate that's elected to city council has to keep an open mind and has to look at what is presented to the council as far as law enforcement services and that provider. I obviously work for the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, and, which has done an excellent job in our community as far as providing law enforcement services. So I, but again, I still have to keep an open mind, and I will, in fact, do that when looking at the contract for providing services. And your second question was, what, and I'm sorry.
Have you received any contributions from the sheriff?
Not directly from the sheriff, no. From the Deputy Sheriff's Association, yes, I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Mr. Cooper, on the form of city government, what form of city government do you favor and why? And the three forms that are offered here is the strong mayor form, the city manager form, which I presume is council manager form, or having a city administrator?
I believe city manager, that's one of the most important things. You're gonna select five quality candidates from up here, and that's very important to go out and select that city manager. That's a very important person, because he's gonna run the day-to-day operations. The five of us who are gonna be in the city council up here can't know everything, so you gotta pick a quality city manager and have that faith in him to go out there and do the right things and inform you and make those right decisions. Ultimately, the city council will make those right decisions, but it's important to surround yourself with good people. And I learned early in life from Glenn Craig and Sheriff Lou Blannis, you can't know everything. Surround yourself with good, quality people, and that's what's gonna make the difference.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Dennis Campbell, here's a question on recreation. What will you do to make sure our teens don't revert to cruising Laguna Boulevard due to lack of recreational facilities for their age group? Aside from a skate park, what would you do for teenagers?
I think we certainly have to do more for our teens, you know, as far as opening up the facilities, the school facilities to, you know, for sports in the evening, more supervision, more teen centers. I think the, as we get our local police force involved, they can be very instrumental in helping the teens with, in different areas of, of, different areas of recreation. Obviously, it's a very important thing. We have a curfew in this town. I think the curfew's important. Cruising is not an alternative, and we need to control that, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Mulberg, the question here is, are you aware of the problems with the Dixon landfill on Elk Grove Florin Road? And I would assume that the questioner would like to know what you would, how you would deal with that issue.
I have heard of the problem of the Dixon landfill. I know one citizen did approach me at one time, although I must admit I'm not all that familiar with it. So before I make some policy statement, what I'd wanna do is take a thorough analysis of what the situation is and how we can best resolve it to the benefit of people that live near there and to its impacts on potential hazards to the groundwater supply.
Thank you. I'm trying to not ask questions that were asked before, but, okay, here's one. About the time that you could dedicate, Mr. Peterson, this would go to you. Starting a new city as a council person may be close to a full-time job. How will you be able to find the time to devote to the job, to give it the attention needed for a city of excellence?
My wife has asked me that same question. I find that when you want something done, you give it to someone who can, who is busy. I'm very dedicated to everything that I do and will find the time. I sleep very little hours as it is. I will find the time within my life, my work, and my family, and dedicate it to the city of Elk Grove.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman, what steps will the city council take to beautify the streets and roadways within Elk Grove?
Steps to beautify the Elk Grove area is something we need to attract businesses into this area. And we just take Elk Grove Boulevard, for example. We have the opportunity here to make this a gem of the area, really make it a downtown area, by working with the merchants to take that slow traffic and make it a strength, so that people get out of their cars and walk in the area, get some trees down like it used to be in this area, get some merchants like it used to be in this area, and follow that plan and extend it to other parts and little pockets of the Elk Grove and Laguna community. We can do that by working with the community, so we can get some of those dollars directed, and maybe look at possibly redirecting some of the sales revenue tax that we get from the malls and the other places that are coming online to preserve this area. Those are our dollars that we're spending here, we should use them to that end. And we can get youth involved in planning some of these, because in the future, it's going to be their city, and we need to make that happen for them. But I think we can, we could do this in a cooperative fashion by having advisors to help us direct that. And there's plenty of folks out here that have great ideas, and we need to put them to work.
Thank you. Rick West, would you like to handle one on groundwater? What will the city council do to protect the agricultural and residential citizens and the drawdown of the groundwater on their wells? It's agri hyphen riz. I'm assuming that's agricultural lands and residential.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rudin, but I didn't understand or hear you.
All right. What will the city council do to protect the agricultural and residential citizens and the drawdown of the groundwater on their wells?
The depletion of the water.
I know what that is. Thanks for the answer, Bill.
You're welcome.
Do you wanna switch questions?
Yeah, I would actually like to.
What steps would you take as a council member to make all aspects of city government more responsive and directly accountable to citizens?
I'm a believer that a city council should enact policies within the city that, first of all, make it a friendly business atmosphere for the community. Furthermore, furthermore, I just went blank. And I'm honest about it, so I'm gonna pass.
All right. We'll go to Mr. Ma, and this is about business partnerships. What partnerships do you propose to develop to strengthen collaboration with our community?
In general, my philosophy is the best thing government can do for business is just get out of the way. I think a lot of times on the county, federal, and state levels, government is the problem by exercising too many permits, making business, jump through too many loopholes, having too many requirements with Cal OSHA, having too many environmental regulations, the taxes are too high. We just need to get out of the way, let business grow, create wealth, create jobs. Public safety will occur because of that. So my philosophy is the best government is that which governs least, so let's just stay out of the way and let the economy grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hibbert, this has to do with community involvement. Judging by the current turnout tonight, there are many groups that are not represented. How would you ensure that all of Elk Grove citizens are included in the various issues? How would you, yeah, how would you involve more people in what's going on in Elk Grove?
I don't know that you can involve everybody, because people get done with work and they wanna go home. Alls they wanna do is just sit down and relax, watch TV, spend time with their children. I don't know that I could dictate to anybody, or, I mean, I'd go out and talk to them. I'd put it in the paper, you know, to come out, but I don't have an answer for that one.
Okay. Melinda Bredo, this is about campaign contributions. Would you be willing to adopt a policy to limit how much people can give and how much a candidate can spend?
Absolutely. I think it's only fair for the candidates to have a limit on their finances. If everybody was able and willing to spend the same amount, everybody would have a fair opportunity to get their word out. And I personally am spending no more than $1,000, and I'm taking no money from special interest groups, which I'm very proud of.
Thank you. Mr. DeYoung, community involvement again. Elk Grove is a diverse community. How will the city council be able to work with and meet the needs of this diverse community?
I'm just writing it down.
Okay.
How would we go about meeting the needs of a diverse community? I think the answer to that is leadership. When we have a dynamic, active city council that's involving the community in the decision-making process, and we, as your city council members, are actively involving ourselves in the neighborhood associations, the teen center, the senior center, the schools, when we are taking part in the community, the community is gonna reciprocate and start taking part in the the city council. Therefore, we get that level of activity increased. Once we get the level of activity increased, we just start a dynamic that is very popular and very positive for the community of Elk Grove. That's how we become an excellent city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Mr. Copino?
You have no questions?
Some of them are duplications and I'm trying to avoid those again.
Give me an easy one.
Give you an easy one, none of them are easy. Well, this one again is on suburban propane. Do you believe the issues relating to suburban propane can be resolved so that it can continue to safely coexist with nearby homeowners and businesses?
My priority is safety for the residents, so I would like to see all the options, you know, how can, I'm sorry, can you repeat the questions?
What would you?
I'm sorry, yeah.
That's all right. How would you resolve the issues of safety as they relate to suburban propane so that it doesn't endanger nearby homeowners and businesses?
My priority is safety for all the residents, especially on the Hampton Village, and I'm open to all options, so I want to, I want to see what's, what's, what's the outcome of the study that's going to come out tomorrow? And if there is a substantial danger for the propane to stay there, maybe we can have, we, maybe we can do, maybe we can build a firewall around propane, you know, or maybe build a bunker, or maybe we can ask the Hampton Village to, to move out and maybe the developers can pay for them to buy them out, or maybe the suburban propane needs to move. But my concern, my primary concern is the safety of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Copino.
Or maybe the suburban propane needs to move, but my concern, my primary concern is the safety of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Copino. Ms. Powell? Most of the candidates speak of controlled growth or smart growth in the new city. Primarily, this seems to translate into low-density housing or upscale housing. State law requires a certain degree of fairly distributed, affordable housing, that means starter homes to many people, which means higher density. How would you seek to accommodate both?
Well, first of all, when we become, if we vote to become a city, we will need to organize a land commission that will look at our community plan and decide, and we as a community would decide what is to be built on land. As far as starter homes, Elk Grove, one of the, one of the things that attract a lot of people to Elk Grove is affordable housing, and I think that's important that we keep that attraction because it welcomes people into our, our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Sherman? Do you support moving the mall to another location since the Elk Grove Fire Department has a policy to oppose residential and retail development within a mile of this propane facility?
That's a loaded question. No, I am in favor of keeping the mall where it is, where it's planned to be. This has been on the books, on the planning stages, rather, for 10 years. The situation that came up because of suburban tank and the threat there is relatively new, but the security of the mall and the citizens surrounding the suburban tanks, which I am one of them, a resident nearby, I don't have a problem with that. The policy that is set by the CSD, the fire chief, is, is the policy set by the CSD. I think, and I firmly believe actually, that this will work. I really do. I am very optimistic. Again, I'll see the report tomorrow, the same time that everybody else does, but in the briefings that we had prior to this, everything is being done that could possibly be done, and blaming the suburban tanks for the demise of the mall, I don't think is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Winok? This has to do with public protection. The security of our citizens is paramount to all of us. Greater police protection and shorter response times has been discussed. How will you ensure that the new Elk Grove police force will maintain a fair and equitable balance among all of Elk Grove's diverse citizens?
Well, we'd be very unfortunate, fortunate if we incorporate because we will be able to keep the rest of the tax dollars that currently go to the rest of the county here and increase our public safety services. A good example is the model of Citrus Heights, which became a city a few years back. They, I think, doubled or tripled the number of police officers they had available to them. We're going to bring in, after deciding whether we contract out or start our own police department, we're going to bring in a quality police chief that will go out and recognize the needs of the community and staff those appropriately. One benefit we will have is we will be able to do our own traffic patrol. Currently, we're done by the California Highway Patrol. That means that we're losing federal and state grant dollars that could go to our community to provide the type of traffic services we need as well. So when we incorporate as a city, and I'm hopefully using the word "when," we'll be able to make our own decisions, assess our own needs, and staff our needs appropriately in our city.
Thank you. We have gone through most of the questions. Some of the ones I have remaining have to do with future vision and things that I think some of you have already discussed. However, if any of you want to answer a question that you heard asked, speak to a question that you heard asked, and want that opportunity to do so, we can begin now at this end and allow you to do it. If you don't have a question that you want to and speak to, I can ask another one of you, of the few that are left. For example, we haven't heard about the groundwater issue yet.
I don't want that one.
You don't want that one?
I don't want that one.
Okay.
I'm drowning that one.
Well, Mr. Briggs, is there, was there a question asked that you would like to speak to that you didn't have the opportunity to?
The problem is I don't remember the question.
Well, let me see, maybe I can ask you another one.
It has to do with communicating with the citizens.
Yes. Involving constituents, well, how would you involve constituents in the many issues?
With the diverse, I wanted to say it's about the art of communication and the ability for the city council to have its commission set up for the neighborhood, the neighborhood. Things occur where it unfolds up and then you find out there's a problem. But thus here on the city council, I believe with each council member knowing our community and being able to discuss the issues when they arise, talking with the homeowners associations, et cetera, we can create a activity of communication with the neighborhoods that allows more opportunity to keep things even. Because to me, when you're in a neighborhood and something's going wrong, you have nowhere to go. I mean, you talk to your neighbor as far as it goes, now you can walk down here, get up here on the podium, start talking to us, and start resolving the problems as they come up, not after they occur.
Thank you. Mr. Brody, was there one that you wanted to speak to that you can remember?
I'll suck it up and take the groundwater question if you want.
All right. Well, let me ask you that one again. What would you do to protect the agri-residence, residential citizens and the drawdown of the groundwater on their wells?
Well, I've just recently been reading about the issue of groundwater in Elk Grove and that the water system supplied to Elk Grove has recently been purchased, I believe, by the Florin Water District or another name like that, and I know that their plan is to use strictly well water to provide water for the entire Elk Grove community as well as the proposed developments of Stone Lake and East Franklin, et cetera, and I think that's very short-sighted. I believe that most experts believe that we do need to divert water, river water to the Elk Grove area to save the groundwater for times of need. I'm not fully up on the issue, but I would promise to educate myself on the issue and listen to all sides of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sories, was there one that you wanted to speak to or do you want me to toss another one?
Actually, there are about 10 of them I want to speak to. I'll take one right now, that's the Dixon landfill. I was very involved with that through my association with the Elk Grove Community Planning Commission. It's been a lot of years where a lot of toxic waste has been dumped, a lot of illegal dumping has taken place over hours, after hours. The EPA caught many illegal activities on videotape. Many governmental agencies were involved in trying to ascertain what type of fines should be levied. Some agreements were finally reached when a new owner came in about two years ago. That owner operates another property here in town as well. Some forms of cleanup have started, but there's many other things we need to do there. I'd be real concerned that we as a city council duplicate the roadblock that went up.
Mr. Sories? Mr. Prater, was there one you wanted to ask, answer, or would you like me to suggest one to you?
You got any questions about fishing?
Fishing, no. I don't think so.
Otherwise, the question about how to attract the type of jobs, I think, it goes back to the master plan issue. I believe to attract the high-tech, service-oriented businesses and jobs that I think we would like to see here, we need to offer a high-tech infrastructure. And I'd like to offer the suggestion that we, as part of our infrastructure plans, is to develop or install a fiber-optic-based communication background. In this high-tech society, everything's on the internet, communications is a thing, and I believe that would be a good feature to have in our master plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leary, is there one that you remember that you wanted to speak to?
Sure. How about, how about the Dixon pit or Dixon landfill? We call it the Dixon pit.
Okay, sure.
Can you go ahead and repeat the question for me?
I have to find it now.
Okay, I'll just start off.
Well, there, there was one here that's worded a little differently, but I'll ask it because I think it's about that. No, this is about a recycling center. Oh, a dump recycling center, is that the Dixon?
Well, I'm aware that what the owners of that facility are trying to do is turn that into what we call a transfer station. And what that is, is all the recycling materials would be taken to that facility, they would be sifted through, and then the recycling materials would be bundled up and then shipped off to a recycling plant. And I'm also been involved with, as far as the Sheriff's Department, I was with the Recycling Division in the Sheriff's Department as a detective, and I've actually arrested people over there at the Dixon pit that were involved in illegal dumping over there, so I'm very well aware of the issues over there. And I do also share some concerns as far as some of the, what they have dumped over there. It has been long-term problems over there. Actually, hazardous materials have been dumped over there over quite a period of time. So I am concerned, very concerned about what has gone over there at the Dixon pit and what continues to go on over there in late hours, because I see trucks going in there also in late hours, so, off-hours. After 5:00, they're supposed to stop dumping over there, but I still continually see trucks over there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cooper?
Issue of city government. I envision the city government as being lean and mean and contracting for most of our services. First of all, it doesn't make physical sense to have our own police departments, better contract, because you pay for badges, vehicles, uniforms, costs are enormous. By contracting with a law enforcement agency, be it the Sacramento Police Department or the Sheriff's Department, we're going to save a great deal of money. When lawsuits occur against those agencies, for instance, City and Center Sites, the Sheriff's Department absorbs that and handles that. As far as garbage services, City and Center Sites has a great contract with Sacramento County, and they pay less than other ratepayers pay throughout the county. So I envision a lean, mean form of government where most of it's contracted and you need very few people, but yet for certain services, obviously building permits and things like that, you're going to have the employees. So we're going to make, it's going to make good physical sense and it's going to save the county money. And as you know by the studies, Elk Grove is very viable, viable as far as tax dollars go. So that's the way I envision the government of Elk Grove taking over.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the traffic congestion question. I think, you know, especially on Elk Grove Boulevard, one of the, you know, there is an Elk Grove Improvement Project that's in the works, the conceptual master plan has been put together. But Elk Grove Boulevard is not, you know, should not and will not in the future be a through street to 99. With improvements on Grant Line, Waterman Bond, and Sheldon Road, there'll be other accesses to 99, and this should alleviate a lot of the Elk Grove problems, and I think this is the way we have to look at it as a city, making the best decisions to alleviate congestion and traffic within a city.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell. A question, several questions have come up about contributions to candidates from the proposers of the Lent Mall. So I don't know which ones of you have those contributions, but if any of you have and want to speak to that, take it up when your term comes. The question is, has this compromised your vote for or against the mall? So I'll leave it to you. Mr. Mulberg, did you have another question that you wanted to ask or?
Well, I could answer either of those questions.
All right.
I have received contributions from the Lent Ranch Mall, but if you all read the Elk Grove Citizen back in October, I signed a letter along with several residents that supported the mall, so I've been a long-term supporter. And one of the reasons I believe we need the mall, other than the obvious revenue enhancement, is that that's one way we're going to get better transportation to Elk Grove. My experience on the South Sacramento Transit Alternatives Project has shown that in order for RT to come down to Elk Grove and to provide better service, they need a major destination. One of those would be the Lent Ranch Mall. If you look at any of the other malls in, in the region, they all have transportation centers. So the reason I support the mall, first of all, is because it will bring better transportation to Elk Grove, and also I don't mind taking contributions for something that I believe in, that'll be better for the community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson?
I'd actually like to speak to the issue of the suburban tank when it comes into relation with the Hampton Village and the mall. I believe it just goes to show the lack of concern that the county board of supervisors have had for the city of Elk Grove to allow Hampton Villages to be built. I would move there, I believe that suburban propane is safe, but the issue is, is now that the fact that it's been brought up to the forefront, it's lost the value of the property. That can't be changed unless you just completely wipe it out of people's minds. When the Lent Ranch Mall comes into that, it's not so much just the propane issue and the scare of the fact that it might go someday. We're taking, we're taking away prime agricultural land, there are safety issues, there are crime issues. I would hate to sacrifice the city of Elk Grove just so that we could have better transportation brought to this city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Zimmerman?
Actually, like one of my colleagues, there's about eight or nine of them, not quite 10, that I'd like to respond to, but I do want to just real quickly go through them. Consume this River Basin Preservation, let's work together with the county, state, and federal agencies to buy up that land and buy it up as we have. As a Rec and Parks Commission, we've done that, and we can buy it up and use it as a mitigation bank for development to use and preserve it, because they're going to build on land, let's, let's have them help us buy it as constituents that preserve that area. Number two, on business, we need to work with people like the Employment Training Panel from the state of California that uses your tax dollars to train people to bring business into Elk Grove. And they, last year, they, they handed out $70 million in training dollars, that we got none of that in this area and we have access to it. Number three, law enforcement. In terms of diversity, we need to ask the tough threshold question to whoever's going to provide our services, and one of the questions I want them to answer is, what is law enforcement, any law enforcement agency doing to prevent the kind of domestic violence that we saw near the corner Franklin and Laguna and the kind of violence we have against women in this community? Those are the kinds of questions we need to ask. And in terms of contributions, I have received contributions from the Deputy Sheriff's Association as well as Lent Ranch, but I can tell you that I got them with the understanding that they do not have my absolute agreement with them on all those issues, that I will oppose something that's unreasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Rick West?
Yes, I'd like to speak, I'd like to speak to the issue of the Lent Ranch Mall and suburban propane. I actually lived over by the suburban propane for about 10 years. I knew those ten--
any law enforcement agency doing to prevent the kind of domestic violence that we saw near the corner Franklin and Laguna, and the kind of violence we have against women in this community? Those are the kinds of questions we need to ask. And in terms of contributions, I have received contributions from the Deputy Sheriff's Association as well as Lent Ranch, but I can tell you that I got them with the understanding that they do not have my absolute agreement with them on all those issues, that I will oppose something that's unreasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Rick West?
Yes, I'd like to speak, I'd like to speak to the issue of the Lent Ranch Mall and suburban propane. I actually lived over by the suburban propane for about 10 years. I knew those tanks were there when I bought there. They were not a problem to me. They've been a good neighbor for this community and a good employer for 21 years, I'm sorry, almost 30 years. In reference to the Lent Ranch Mall, I also have received a check from the developer of the mall, but I have also expressed some concerns to them in reference to the mall and some of the tenants that they're bringing in. My concerns are that it may not become an upscale mall with some of the tenants they're hiring and, I mean, bringing in, and I would like them to bring in some more upper-scale type stores like a Bon Matier or something in that range.
Thank you. Gregory Ma?
I'd also like to address those two issues of the Lent Ranch Mall and suburban propane. I support the Lent Ranch Mall, but I'm still waiting for my check, haven't seen it yet. But I've heard through the grapevine that I'm not getting one, but when I'm on the city council, I'll still support it, thank you. Secondly, on suburban propane, I have a couple of thoughts. One is, we cannot allow terrorists to dictate what types of policies Elk Grove City Council is going to have. I agree, perhaps houses should not have been built around a tank, but I'll also say if that tank ever does explode, I won't send a bill to people who die.
Bill Hibbert? Mr. Hibbert?
Let me shoot at suburban propane and Lent Ranch Mall, since everybody else seems to be doing it. I think suburban propane ought to stay there. I do think that the new city council needs to sit down with Chief Meeker and come with a solution, since he is an expert in that area. As far as the Lent Ranch Mall, I haven't taken any money, I don't plan on taking any money. I haven't gone for any endorsements except for one, and that was from Ed Lombardi the day he left, so he's out of town, so I don't have to worry about him anymore. I don't owe anybody anything other than the residents of this community if I'm elected. I personally am tired of hearing the accusations about these people, and I know one or two of them, and that's it, but I have complete faith and trust in the rest of these people. If they take money from a developer, that they are on the up and up. I'm tired of this, I don't want to hear it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbert. I do have some new questions here, so if any of the others of you would, no, they want the old ones. Well, Melinda Bredo, did you want to respond to one of the others?
First, I've been offered money from Lent Ranch Mall, and I have said no, just to get that off the record here. Secondly, the traffic congestion on Elk Grove Boulevard, I've got two ideas to cure that. First off is the train. I think one of the reasons there's so much congestion with the train is because of the speed the train goes through, and I believe that the reason for that is because of the switching that's being done at the time when the train is going through and the speed they have to maintain for the switching. I first would like to recommend the switching be moved elsewhere to avoid the traffic delays. Secondly, I used to live in Greenhaven where they had a grammar school on Gloria Drive, which is a busy road, and they had a beautiful, beautiful pedestrian overpass that limited the children crossing the busy road, and I think if it is affordable and the budget that Elk Grove would benefit from a pedestrian overpass across Elk Grove Boulevard, right here at Kerr Middle School, to get the children off the road at 3:30 in the afternoon, so they will be less kids there, the traffic will go smoother, and less accidents and loss of life.
Thank you, Ms. Bredo. Mr. DeYoung?
I had a question, and I don't know how reliable this is, but I understand that they're planning on putting a depot back where the old one used to be by Elk Grove Boulevard in the train tracks. Does anybody know if that's true?
That's part of the old town.
Is that, is that true?
Because of the lack of time, I don't want you asking each other questions. I'll ask the questions. I think he's turning the tables on us, but I think that's something worth, worth looking into. All right. Whose turn is it? Mr. DeYoung, it's your turn.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Norm DeYoung. I have received money from Lent Ranch. Lent Ranch is a, is going to be a very positive step for Elk Grove. It'll be positive in that it will, it'll generate $1 million in school impact fees. It'll divert $232 million in leakage that we're spending right here in Elk Grove, I mean, we're spending somewhere else that's going to stay right here in Elk Grove. It's $232 million. There'll be 2,500 jobs created there, and so the retort is, but they're only low-paying jobs. Well, they're starter jobs, not in competition with Lent Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Raul Copino?
I would like to speak about, on Lent Ranch Mall, sorry. Well, I'm opposed to the mall. Well, you're right, commercial and housing development equals tax revenue. Money is important, but shall not be the sole reason for, in making critical decision. The most important thing is there should be a semblance in the community. Let's focus on the most important pertaining, pressing issues for the community, like water, pollution, traffic, development, and loss of farmlands, those kind of things. We have, we need to take care of our existing issues and problems first before we talk really about growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copino. Lorna Powell?
I would like to address local control and community involvement. I think that one of the important things about becoming a city will be involving the community, because it is the community whose concerns will be addressed, as well as it's the community who will be making decisions on what goes on in our community. And in order for us to make decisions as a community, the community has to be educated and informed on decisions so that they can make informed decisions when it's time to make them. I'm committed to making sure that we as a community know what is going on in our city at all times, and that's by educating you, by getting the information out to the community in stores, gas stations, wherever we frequent in the community, because it's important for all of us to get involved, because when we become a city, it's all of us that are going to be involved in the city.
Thank you, thank you. Sophia Sherman?
Thank you. I'd like to address the question asked earlier about time-consuming position being a city council person. I have, early on, have always committed myself full-time to the position of CSD Director. I retired my business in 1996 when I was elected to this position, because I believe in giving 100%, and I felt that I could not do that with owning my own business, running my own business, and also being an elected official to represent the community. As an elected city council person, I commit to you that I will be a full-time city council person with my open-door policy and available to you at all times, and maybe we can clean up some of the garbage that we have received from downtown. It's not too late, we still can incorporate. Oh, that rhymed.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Mr. Winok?
Thank you, Ann. I don't really have any poetry, but I do want to address a question you asked Mr. Sorries earlier, which was the top three priorities beyond those listed by the incorporation effort. I want to cover a couple of things that haven't really been addressed yet tonight. The first deals with our seniors. We have several senior communities here in Elk Grove. Last Saturday night, I had the pleasure of having spaghetti and bread pudding dinner with one of our senior communities, and I really got a chance to understand some of the issues and challenges they face that I think we can make a difference on as a city council, first and foremost of which is transportation. Many of them are unable to drive and rely on public transportation to get where they need to go for medical appointments, to do their shopping. I think as a council, we ought to address that shameful condition and make sure that our seniors have adequate transportation services. The second thing we haven't talked too much about tonight deals with our school district here in Elk Grove. My wife's a teacher and is sitting in the audience, so I feel at least obligated to mention the school district. Using the money we have in the schools to support them, I believe is important, and that's something that will be a priority for me as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winok. I will say, before we have the closing statements, which we're going to-
How do you get to answer in regards to the taking contributions? Did you start it halfway down?
Well, but you did have a chance to answer a question. The one who answered a contribution question didn't answer another issue question, so I'm going to consider this one not appropriate at the time. But if you want to include it in your closing statement, you have an opportunity then. I just wanted to summarize a few of the other questions that were asked, and the fact that I didn't ask them doesn't mean that they're not important, but it was all relative. There were a lot of questions about propane and the tanks in the Lent Ranch. There were also questions about land densities, keeping small residential parcels, being able to accommodate the needs of all residents, including senior citizens, and Mr. Winok addressed that one, housing for all levels of income, executive housing, middle-level housing, and less costly housing. There was a question about preserving the historical character of Elk Grove while meeting all of these other diverse needs. There was a question about concealed gun permits, whether you would issue those to any law-abiding citizen who applied. A question about your relationship to the Elk Grove School District Board of Education. How many times have you been to the city planning commission meeting, county planning commission meeting? I didn't want to ask that one because I couldn't give all of you a chance to answer that one. What would you would do about parks, providing parks where there are new houses being built? And also, how you would distribute the taxes, tax revenue, apportionment of taxes between the city and the county, and what you would do to make sure that the taxes that are generated here would stay here. So I just wanted you to know that these are questions that people have on their minds, we just can't get to all of them tonight. But if you want to say anything in your closing statement, you're free to do so. So let's begin now with the closing statements, and Mr. Briggs?
Thank you very much. I currently am very active in the community. I'm on the board of directors of the Rotary Club, community service director. I'm also vice president of the Senior Center here in Elk Grove. We are on, we have a transportation committee that's working with RT right now, is going to establish a new bus line called Bus 53, which will help deliver the seniors to various locations starting June this year. I'm also on the Chamber of Commerce board of directors, my business abilities to sit there and work with the Chamber of Commerce in order to help bring my expertise to bring business to business in Elk Grove here. I'm also believe my work here, the LAPCO and Board of Supervisory Process for this incorporation to be here today qualifies me to be a candidate, and I did not take any money from Deputy Sheriff's Association. I did take money from the Lent Ranch Mall with the answer to being objective and making sure it's a good project before I voted on it, and I also turned down a contribution for the gambling, gaming association came in, and so I turned that one down. Thank you. Vote for me.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Mr. Brody?
Thank you. From the home office on Adobe Spring Way, the top 10 reasons you should vote for me. Number 10, I strongly believe in the message of the incorporation drive, local control, no new taxes, and more police. Number nine, as the managing partner of my own business, I understand fiscal responsibility and management. Number eight, I'm waiting until next week to put my signs up. Number seven, on March 8th, my signs will come down. Number six, I will have an open-door policy. Number five, I do not consider the office as a stepping stone, stepping stone to or from any other political office. Number four, I'm a lawyer, but I promise not to sue you. Number three, I promise to be honest, hardworking, and responsive to your local neighborhood concerns. Number two, I do not have a website. Drive down my street, yell out my name, I'll come out, I'll talk to you. And number one, as always, if my family supports, endorses, and trusts me, so can you. They're very good judges of character. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Mr. Sorries?
Thank you. Traditionally, closing statements deal with the candidate's qualifications. I have a lot of information on my back table, I'll take my time right now to talk about the incorporation effort. A recent ad yesterday disturbed me, or actually, yesterday, about a No on Measure J ad, and it talked about preserving what we currently have in Elk Grove. That scares me, because what we have in Elk Grove isn't what we used to have in Elk Grove, and if we don't incorporate, what we'll have in its place is scary. We need to take the time line for everyone in the audience and everyone up here to educate people about the advantages of cityhood. There is so much we need to do to make sure that the direction Elk Grove goes is what Elk Grove needs, and it has to happen with incorporation. Currently, as candidates, right now, we represent a lot of our families and friends that have supported us. March 8th, we start representing 65,000 people. I would ask everyone out there and the candidates, think of those 65,000 people right now, and push and do whatever you can to make sure Measure J passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorries. Brian Prater?
I'd like to wind up with why vote for me. Your vote for Measure J and Brian Prater for city council will get you a motivated team player dedicated to serving his citizens and who will work long and hard with the other council members to make the city of Elk Grove a prosperous, business-friendly community responsive to the needs of its citizens, offering safety, convenience, and quality public services, and preserving the identity and traditions of our old Elk Grove. As your representative, I will work to create a local government that will use our resources in ways that maximize productivity and effectiveness, promote the establishment of neighborhood associations, and empowering them to help themselves, support with community-oriented policing and community volunteerism. I'm Brian Prater, thanking you for your vote on March 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Prater. Michael Leary?
That's, that's all I can say. I mean, it's up to you people as to who you place in office. I think whoever you get, you're going to have five outstanding council members. Mayor Rudin, I'd like to use the remainder of my time in memoriam to the three aircraft pilots that died at a Mather.
Okay. Melanie Bredo? Melinda, I'm sorry, Melinda Bredo?
Melinda Bredo, yeah. One of the reasons I decided to run for city council was the day I went down to the voter registrar's on running, there was one other woman running for council, Sophia Sherman, and since then, I, that day, I said to myself, you know, there has to be another strong, independent, smart, business-savvy woman in this town that could run against 18 men. So I did decide to run, and since then, I think the day I was actually down there, Lorna Powell was down also, filling out her paperwork. So I am proud to be one of the three women running against 18 men, and I would hope that at least one of us would win, if not all three. Our council needs to be diverse, and having a female on the council will do just that, and I'm proud to be one of the three females running. Also, remember that I am last on the ballot, but I should be first for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Norm DeYoung?
I want to thank Barbara Hopkins and Annette Garcia, and Your Honor, the mayor, and League of Women Voters for providing this forum for us tonight. My name is Norm DeYoung. I'm number 249 on your ballot, and vote yes on Measure J. Voters in Elk Grove and Laguna will decide on incorporation of the new city of Elk Grove and choose five new members. This is a big step, and it's important that you choose the right team. Law enforcement endorses me. Jerry Anamoto, who is the highest-ranking law enforcement officer in Northern California, he's the United States Federal Marshal, Jan Scully, Sheriff Lou Blannis, former sheriff Glenn Craig, former sheriff Robbie Waters, they all endorse me. They've worked with me, I've worked with them, they trust me, they know I'll do a good job, I've worked hard for them, I'll work hard for you. I've been serving the community for 30 years, I'll serve Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Lorna, Paul Copino, Raoul, Raoul Copino, excuse me.
Well, I'm pretty sure you're all going to listen to me because of my beautiful accent. Well, just like what I said before, I would like to focus on the most pressing issues facing the community, like water, pollution, traffic, development, and loss of farmland, and overcrowded school. Let's focus on improving the services to the elderly, youth, and kids. We should all be sensitive to cultural needs of the ethnic minorities. I will favor an ordinance or resolution condemning racial profiling and hate crimes. I would like to see a police officer or a city council member to be friendly, approachable, and willing to establish rapport with the community. I do believe that endorsement and campaign contribution from local politicians and special interest groups equals political debt, which means you cannot be impartial and fair in making decisions on issues pertaining with these groups. So ladies and gentlemen, please vote wisely. This is your city, you don't want your city to be ruined by a few people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copino. Lorna Powell? Lorna Powell?
The reason why I feel the Elk Grove community should vote for me is because that I believe that I would be a strong, reliable, committed city council member, one that you can count on. I will be accessible to you, the community. I will seek to actively involve you by notifying you and educating you on all issues brought before the city council. I am committed to the success of Elk Grove, and the safety and preservation of life is my main concern. I have the time, the energy, and the sincere desire to help guide our community as we move forward. I want Elk Grove to be a city that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Sherman?
Thank you.